Billy, big supporter of Senator and his family.
They're actually not friendly, but we don't see that.
We have pictures of us at my cousin's house when we were four years old. So we know each other.
Listen, I'm not sure which is worse, me and the chief are running the town as far as the record went on TV.
They run the town and you are on TV.
I'll catch over there.
All right, come in tomorrow.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, all members of the board being present, we will call to order the meeting of the Milton Board of Selectment for November 12, 2009. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from October 8th, October 19th, and October 29th. There is an amendment to, or change to item four of the minutes of October 8th. When we took that vote allowing brunch at the 88 Wharf Restaurant, we didn't put a back end to it. In other words, we said he could open at 11:00, we didn't say when he could close. And in the special permit that was granted for the 88 Wharf, we, he was allowed, it specifically says in his Sundays between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. for brunch. So we can keep the 11:00, but we have to put the limit of 2:00 p.m. on the back end of the brunch. So it would, that part of the minutes would read from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and to allow the addition of brunch on Sundays.
So the request was for 10:00 to 2:00?
Right.
What we actually wrote.
No, the special permit that was negotiated before allows it 10:00 to 2:00. He didn't ask for any specific times. We voted 11:00, but in the motion, we forgot to put the 2:00 on.
He asked for 11:00.
But he didn't have any end time, so it's forced to be in compliance with the special permit.
The special permit, we have to put an end time.
So we just want to amend the...
But there is an end time, because he, I really think we should be talking about this on, you know, in our meeting, because in order to decide what we want to do, because normally they can open at 4:00, is that right?
This is just the Sunday brunch.
This is just the Sunday brunch.
No, I know, but they open at 4:00, at 5:00, okay. So if they're, and what are they asking for?
No, we're just...
What did they ask for?
He asked for 11:00 to 2:00.
Did they expect to stay open, or did they expect to close after the brunch?
Well, I think that's what's happening. I think that he's stretching the time into the 5:00 o'clock.
Oh, so he expected by opening at 11:00?
I would've thought that when he asked for this, that he thought he was asking for an earlier, I know that we had the original permit, but we didn't grant that.
Right.
So then I would've thought he was asking for an earlier opening time, and that would be it. He's open, and then he closes at night. And has anybody talked, I mean, we didn't discuss this, so I don't see how we can just do it by amending the minutes.
Okay. Well...
I know we have a long meeting tonight.
Bring up his new business, or you can bring up his old business.
Well, it's the will of the board.
Why don't we do that? Because the minutes actually reflect what we did. So the minutes are actually correct. So by amending the minutes, we'd actually be saying that we did something differently than what we actually did. So we could approve the minutes and have, under New Business, this discussion to may perhaps change either the special permit or our vote on it.
Or define it.
The change would be reflected in tonight's minutes.
Right, yes.
As long as we take the vote, we're okay.
Yeah.
When I voted that, whether I was right or wrong, I thought I was voting just to open the restaurant earlier that day.
Yes, so was I.
So we need to talk about it again.
Okay.
Do we have to be in compliance with the special permit? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, that's what...
Special permit issued by the planning board.
That's 10:00 to 2:00.
Oh, I thought you were talking about something we had issued.
No, I think the situation was that 88 Wharf...
Well, yes, we do, absolutely. They have to go back to the planning board. Oh, okay. Well, I would prefer to take the vote in our meeting.
All right, let's wait, we'll put it off to the...
If you're worried about, you know, what the owner is currently doing, I think if we have the discussion at our meeting and we tell him what we voted, I would presume that he would begin complying.
All right, we'll take it up under New Business then. Any other changes to the minutes of October 8th?
So I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes of Thursday, October 8th, as written.
Second.
Motion's made in second at all, favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is the minutes of October 19th, is it? October 19th, the short meeting.
I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes of October 19th as written.
Second.
Motion's made in second at all, favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I don't think I have a second. Was there a second page to the October 29th, or was it just ended at 7:00?
We adjourned at 7:00.
Oh, there we go. Okay, great. So I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of October 29th.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at all, favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Future meeting dates. We are meeting next Thursday, the 19th, at 6:30. The next week is Thanksgiving week, and our December dates are December 3rd and December 17th.
Those are finals, that's a motion.
Time moves on.
Well, you know, we were just talking before the meeting with Mr. Hurley, and we're going to be, we're going to be voting articles to open and close the annual town meeting at their first meeting in December, December 3rd.
Your special, and then first week in January. But that's very close together, yeah.
You're going to be busy with, especially a new special town meeting and then the annual.
Right.
And all the paperwork has got to be probably pretty clear by January. Special has to be December 3rd, which is the meeting after your next, if that's the date.
Okay. So does anybody have any changes to those dates?
Nope, they work for me.
All right, so the next item on the, the next item on the agenda is citizen speak. Is there time set aside for citizens of the town to come and address the board? So if there's anybody here that would like to address the board?
No.
Come on up.
All right, go ahead.
Just say your name and, name and address and...
Okay.
Well, away.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Margaret Epplehart. I live at 18 Stanton Road, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Milton Foundation for Education. I just wanted to come this evening, an extended invitation to the town, to attend our 11th Annual Celebration for Education, which will be held on Saturday, November 21st, at Lombardo's in Randolph. For those people who don't know, the Milton Foundation for Education is a nonprofit group that supports the public schools in Milton, all six public schools. And each year we hold a big gala called the Celebration for Education, and each year we raise funds to support different programs. This year, the funds are going, our theme is Up and Away Beyond the Basics, and the funds raised will go to support enrichment activities, during the day enrichment activities. So they could be art, or music, or language, or drama, or, you know, something to do with one of the, we've had some great proposals from the department heads and from the principals, and so all the money we go, we raise will go towards funding enrichment programs and then the ongoing work at the foundation. So I just wanted to extend invitation to come on the 21st, it's at 6:00 p.m. There's a silent auction, there's a live auction, there's going to be a comedian, there's going to be a special video tribute to the schools and to the foundation's work, and there's going to, in continuation of our theme last year, be a casino again, where you're going to get to play with funny money and gamble for prizes and trips and things like that. It's a fun evening, and I hope that everyone will put it on their calendar and plan to attend. And on behalf of Erica Donahue, Denise Quealy, and myself, we're the chairs, and the entire foundation board, I thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you and good luck with your meeting.
Thanks.
Good luck with your, the evening.
Oh, thanks a lot. It'll be fun.
Anyone else here for citizen speak? Sir? No, it fell behind you. You can go next.
My name is Emmett Schmarzo. I live at 45 Aberdeen Road. Been living there 18 years, and I'm a town meeting member. I appear before you to request that the town fund a study concerning the potential traffic issues associated with the changing of Temple Shale Home property and Route 138 from residential to commercial. I was under the impression that if a picture's worth a thousand words, I would, I would bring a couple photos. I walk on Route 138 every day, and I took this picture on a Wednesday in August, and I was standing roughly between Belvar and Brook Road, and I looked at all this traffic and decided to count the vehicles insofar as I could. I stopped at 40 because those are the ones in front of me, and there were the other vehicles behind, and sometimes the traffic, in fact, backs up to as far as Oak Street. In fact, I saw that the other day. I was kind of surprised because somebody said it happened, and then I saw it myself. I just, so this is, you know, just a picture I took. I also want to present a couple things, and I walked around last Saturday morning literally every block in the neighborhood, like eight or nine blocks, with my sneakers, which I measured to be 12 and 1/8 inches, and really looked at the space from curb to curb. This is what was down my street, Aberdeen Road. This was in the morning, Tuesday morning, and I was talking with the officer who was there, and she was, you know, making sure people can cross the street, and they said, "This is fine, except you should see it when it snows." Well, I shouldn't say it was fine, she said, "But, you know, when you've got the sidewalks blocked and you've got people opening the, you know, and the cars and the plows and the..." So this represents to her a real issue, and it turns out that, again, things I didn't know, because I'm usually on my way to work then, cars are parked on both sides of 138 in point of fact, like from one or two blocks on one side to like at least one block on the other side. I'm really concerned about what this, what this represents to the neighborhood.
Sorry, I didn't hear the part, where were you standing when this picture was taken?
On Aberdeen Road, looking toward, that's from, well, looking towards Route 138. I'm sort of near Brush Hill Road or Truman Highway.
Okay, okay.
And I, and if, point of fact, I would notice, note that the vehicles are actually parked on, you know, not what would be the sidewalk theoretically. If you just had the two vehicles parked where they're supposed to be, I think it would be really, really tight for any vehicle to go through there. And most of the streets, in fact, there are three or four of the streets that are under 20 feet in width from curb to curb, which represents a real issue if you've got, you know, three vehicles there. My concern is that with the traffic that's going to go through the lights, in fact, was a funny thing I discovered this morning, because where Cheever crosses, there's really two different sets of lights, and I always sort of ignored it because one seemed to follow the other, but, but it really doesn't. And concern I've got is...
When you go across Blue Hill Avenue at Cheever?
Right, right. And people, of course, have been, you know, looking at, you know, how, Armour's the widest street of all, and, you know, cars are going down there, and they're seeing us cut through. So I was standing there taking pictures and watching people come out of Tucker Street and go down to Churchill, which is, and it was like, okay. And in fact, I have a 52-second video clip of a car trying to get out of Churchill Street. It was really kind of astonishing, because I knew there's a bus stop there, and you can see the bus coming up, and the person's trying to get out, and then I thought it was going to witness an accident because of, because when cars are parked there, in point of fact, you can't see around them. My daughter was actually hit at the corner of Decker and 138, and neighbors who we know happened to see it, and she was, she was standing still, and a person pulls in and then hit her and said, "Well, why didn't you back up?" I mean, she was actually at the stop, you know, the line, it's, you know, so it's this kind of, I feel it's really essential to the quality of life in the neighborhood to be able to get around the neighborhood, and I'm concerned that a project of that scope is really not appropriate for that. I mean, I like the open space, and people who lived there a long time, when I came in, when we came in 18 years ago, we thought, "This is a great place," and people said, you know, "You can move to, you know, you can go to another school." We're looking, we said, "We want French immersion, we want to go to Tucker School, enjoy the neighborhood," and many other people, of course, have come in since then. I would like to preserve the neighborhood insofar as I can. I don't think it would, it will never change, but I can tell you that when we wanted to play tennis growing up, we had to block off people over the crown of the hill on Aberdeen, said, "You watch the cars there, you watch," so we could, you know, this is, it's the kind of thing where you want a neighborhood, and you want to be able to go and do things with your kids, even fly a kite, which is, Charlie Brown's got nothing on this neighborhood because you've got no place to do it. I just would like to see, I don't expect the neighborhood to never change, because I think some amenities are appropriate there, but amenities to scale in the neighborhood and not on a, in effect, I would call it regional scale, if I might. Last but not least, not to bore you, but I want to appreciate, on Blue Hill Terrace, I took this picture as well on Saturday morning, you're seeing the moon up here, and I thought, you know, it's really kind of pretty going through there when it's quiet, and people just think of, you know, we're just zipping through this stuff all the time, and in point of fact, I thought, you know something, we ought to be able to appreciate it, and I think, I for one feel I would appreciate it better, knowing that I was able to do things with the kids, and then the neighbors are able to do things with kids on the street, and not have it be a cut through, as I believe many of the streets already are. So I'm hoping that the town will in some way support the notion that having a study where the traffic really does make a difference, because some of it's already, we're assuming, going on the Canton Ave, because they know things are sort of crowded down here, but I don't, I think crossing there, if you miss the lights both, both directions, you're looking at, well, in fact, I've got like about a 50-second, a different clip, just showing the cars go, you can't move out.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is this the end of the world? No, it's not the end of the world. Does it represent something that the neighborhood, in fact, has to deal with issues that are not really, that aren't really our neighborhood issues?
Mm-hmm.
And I feel very strongly about it. I've been involved with this for about 15 months now, with neighbors and part of the Tucker Neighborhood Association. I'm not, I don't feel I'm asking for, well, maybe I am asking for special consideration, it's more a matter of saying, "We ought to have the information straight before we do something," because when you change the zoning or the overlay, you change something for a long time. And having the traffic study come in after the fact, which should be informing us as to what is an appropriate way to do this, because if you're going to set an example here, it's going to exist someplace else.
Well, it's, it's not our policy to respond to citizen speak.
Okay.
And, but you bring up a subject that I think, you know, we're very concerned about. I know, I've watched some of the planning board meetings on this, this development, and I think Eddie Duffy has brought up this, quite, the narrowness of the streets and whatnot quite a bit. We will, I intend to discuss this very issue and a new business at this meeting, but it's, it could be four hours from now.
Fine. I get the planning board meeting, yes.
No, I understand what you're saying, Emmett. I take it to heart, and it will be a subject that we will discuss. Most of this is under the planning board, as you know, but...
I do, I understand.
But we will discuss some of these things under New Business, because I intend to bring it up.
I thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we hang on to these, or do you want to...
You know what, I can bring them back after the planning meeting, if you're still here.
You know, if, if, after the...
Or just bring them to the office, so we can have them here.
Oh, sure. I'd be delighted to.
Yeah, just as part of the record.
That'd be great.
After the, after the planning meeting, after the planning meeting, we'll probably still be here. So, impossible.
Well, thank you.
See, you'll last longer.
Anybody else for citizen speak? I'm sorry, sorry. We've had you there.
They don't send me home either.
Oh.
Bill McLaughlin, 64 Antwerp Street.
Oh, you missed him.
I don't know whether the board is aware of it or not, but a retired Milton firefighter recently died, Joe Vogel. He was a Vietnam veteran. His grandfather was on the fire department here. His father was on the police department, died of a heart attack while on the police department. Joe spent 25 years on the fire department and suffered a heart attack also.
At a fire?
Yes.
He did, wasn't a fire on Brook Road?
Oh, Vincent.
Okay.
He's been denied permission to be buried in the veterans' lot at the cemetery. I mean, a man whose family and himself devoted so much of their life to this town, plus he went to Vietnam, the country asked him, and they deny him the right to be buried at the veterans', in the veterans' lot? There's something very wrong with that.
I also see, I pulled out some more information, he was also the past commander and late member of Milton Post 114 here as well, and a member of the Elks.
Something just isn't right there. I don't know what it is.
Oh, again, we're not, we don't, it's not our policy to respond at citizen speak. I can tell you that it's been a subject that Mr. Murner and I have been involved with most of the afternoon. We are aware of the controversy. We, I didn't hear about this till midday today, or what, this morning.
This is when we all got notified, yeah.
And so we are working with the cemetery trustees, which are a separately elected board.
I realize that.
And so that...
And we noticed the time is of the essence as well, because this is on Saturday.
Right, he's being buried on Saturday.
Right.
We are working on it, and I think that, I can say that we're close to a conclusion, a positive conclusion, or at least we think we are.
Well, I thank you all very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
And, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just along with, with the board being notified, and I think there's some members of the Legion Post here, Al Thomas in particular has made, I think, four calls to your office today, just trying to, you know, provide whatever assistance he can provide, or information that, you know, the trustees may need to make a decision, so, you know, I think he's been working very hard also to try to see if there's any way to have a reconsideration of what I believe is a, a policy or where if you're a Milton resident and you're a veteran, you can be buried in the, in the veterans' section. However, if you leave Milton, then you're no longer, you know, considered a member of the town, obviously. But in this particular case, Mr. Vogel had to actually go to a warmer climate.
For health reasons.
For health reasons.
There's a doctor's letter that says that.
And so the, you know, Mr. Thomas is working to get a copy of that letter for the trustees to try to see if that, that will alleviate, I think, the concern about, I think Mr. Vogel sold this house on Lothrop in 2003, so it's been about five years, but it was for health reasons.
Yeah.
So it may be that the trustees just didn't have that full information at the time that they voted, and I'm hoping with a new information...
I talked to one of the trustees about two hours ago, and he was not aware of that.
Yeah, so I think that, hopefully, that will, that will help them in their deliberations.
And it can be resolved. I certainly hope so. I, it seems right that he should be able to be buried here.
Right, well, hopefully, hopefully we'll have an answer by tomorrow. We better. Anyone else for citizen speak? Gino, did you want to?
Well, I've just been doing the same thing, actually.
Okay, okay.
I think with Joe.
Okay.
I can say one thing about...
Chief Grant?
I think one thing that we could put into consideration for Joe, and I actually just, I'm here for another matter, but I worked with Joe side by side for quite a while, and I can tell you that if it wasn't for health reasons, Joe would have been a 65 guy, you know, he would have stayed till the very last day that he was allowed to stay on our department, and, you know, we would have had to usher him out the door. So he's a very civic-minded person, and he, again, didn't leave Milton of his own accord. He left because it was necessary. And I tell you right now, in here, he's a Milton person from start to finish, so, thank you.
That's nice, very nice, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to address the board for citizen speak? Okay. The, the next item on the agenda is Mr. Blanchard from the Health Department talking about flu vaccines.
Aye, thank you. I'll be very quick, brief as possible.
Just don't cough.
I know, as soon as she sat down, I started to cough. I'm sorry.
So give, um, two, two updates. One, in first, regarding the seasonal flu and our vaccines. As you may know, we had to postpone our last two clinics, Cunningham Park and the Council on Aging, because we just ran out of vaccine. We are still awaiting additional vaccine, and we are, we do expect it. We've been promised that we should have received a vaccine by the end of November.
This is for the regular flu?
This is seasonal flu.
Right.
So given that, we're hoping to reschedule for late November or early December, those two clinics.
Okay.
So we would just ask that people keep an eye on cable TV, we'll put it in the Times, the Ledger, our website, so just keep an eye out, and we'll reschedule those once we have confirmation and...
Put it on, put it on the cable scroll, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's, that's seasonal flu. With regards to H1N1, not much different than what you see on the news now, there's just not a lot of vaccine out there. We are planning, I guess we can't announce anymore if we have vaccine or how much we have, so, some mystery around that, but we are preparing for a very limited distribution of vaccine here in Milton. As you probably know, there are priority groups of the vaccine. Due to the low amount, we actually have now subgroups. So the first group that we're targeting are going to be pregnant women, household contacts of pregnant women in their third trimester, so, you know, about to give birth, about to be home with a new baby, and people who live with or care for children younger than six months of age. And the reason for that is the vaccine is not able to be given to children under six months of age. So that's kind of the first subgroup, and we've actually began to, begun to schedule appointments for those people in our office, and there is a press release out there, but I'll give the number of the phone. If you fall into one of those three categories, and just to reiterate, have to at this point, you can call 617-898-4947. We were able to acquire a separate phone line that are board health line, which has been very overwhelmed with phone calls, and this goes automatically to voicemail, and you can leave the information, the message requests, and we're doing our best to set up appointments.
And you'll give that number to the Council on Aging and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, if you're looking for pregnant women...
Right, maybe not the council. Well, we'll certainly spread it out there as, as much as possible.
Okay.
You know, we do expect to run out very quickly, so if we do, we'll keep the names and numbers of people that weren't able to get the vaccine, and we will get them in as soon as we can.
Just in a general, I was reading the Ledger, I think last week or the week before, and it talked about a school in Wamuth that, St. Francis Xavier or something like that, that like 40% of the kids had not come to school on, you know, one or two given days in that week, and have you been monitoring our schools and...
We have, we're, both myself and mostly our public health nurse, working very closely with the school nurses. We're very fortunate in that I believe that we saw very high level activity last spring compared to area towns.
High level of flu or...
Of swine flu activity.
Oh, we did, okay.
And I think as a result of that, what we're seeing is less activity now in the fall. So in other words, it's been here, it's run through a lot of the population of the students, and that we're not, we're not seeing it as highly as some towns are. And that could change at any given moment, you know, tomorrow we could have a big spike in absences, but we are working with the nurses to see anything unexpected. The state is encouraging schools to stay open unless they have such a high number of, particularly staff out, that they're not able to operate the schools as, as normally they could, but, so they are really encouraging it. So again, those three priority groups for now, and as supplies grow, we will expand the parameters. You know, the children are another priority group that we'll be adding, and then eventually we do hope to hold general public clinics for anyone, regardless of health condition or age, to get the vaccine.
Okay.
So we'll, again, same sources, cable TV, the Times, the Ledger, our website, and we'll get that information out there once we have it.
Yep, the Milton Record transcripts here, too, so...
Thank you.
We'll include them. But the other thing, too, is you're invited here, any, you know, in any of our scheduled meetings to update us, you know.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I would certainly use this.
I think the public would like to know this information.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a meeting with Warren Committee Chair Tom Hurley. Mo, do you want to come up, too?
How's everybody doing?
Hi.
Good.
How are you doing? You tell us how we're doing.
Well, it could be better. Let me just pass out my little handouts here. One, two.
Is there a packet?
Three.
Is there packets? Okay, there you go.
Thank you. You're here to tell us about, we have a windfall, is that...
Yeah, it's Christmas time, yeah. I wish I were. But basically, I'm here to just talk about the, the state of the town in terms of 9C cuts and, and local aid and, and what some of our recommendations are. So basically, what I wanted to do first is just kind of go over the cherry sheet, you know, which is the state's local aid. Called the cherry sheet because it used to be cherry in color, not anymore. And then just talk a little bit about some of the school information I have in terms of some of their cuts, and then kind of go onto the Quinn bill a little bit. So it's kind of potpourri. And kind of finishing up with where our reserve fund sits right now in terms of the Warren Committee's reserve fund, some of the unemployment issues that have recently come up, and, and then kind of go over our proposal on dealing with future 9C cuts. So the first thing you have in your packet is a, it's a spreadsheet that has several columns on it. The first column is, and this is the state's local aid to Milton, the first column is the Warren Committee's estimate for fiscal year 10. So this just kind of shows where we started and where we are now. The second column is the state budget that was actually passed back in July or, you know, late July. And the third column is the reduction. Fourth column is the governor's proposed new local aid after his 9C cuts. So you can see, you know, basically where the Warren Committee started was total estimated local receipts of $8,655,000, about 4.8 million for Chapter 70 in schools, and about 3.8 million for, you know, the local town. When the actual budget was finalized, that number came in at 8.3 million, a reduction of about $84,000 for the schools, reduction of about $247,000 for the, on the town side, for a total of $331,000. And that was the issue we just dealt with at the special town meeting. We did cut appropriations by the $331,000. Now we roll forward to the, in October, you know, the governor has proposed his 9C cuts. Section 9C allows the governor to cut any part of the budget that's within his control and recommend other cuts that the legislature has to pass. That's a pretty color.
It's cherry on the right hand side.
There we go.
So the, the governor's proposal really hasn't hit too many of the line items on, on, on local aid, but it did hit one line item heavy, and that's the pilot payments, payment lieu of taxes for state-owned land. He's recommended a $216,000 cut in that. And he's recommending a $23,000, almost $24,000 cut in the Quinn bill, and a very small cut in the library grant of about $1,000, for a total of about $241,000 in 9C cuts. So basically, it's gonna bring us from the $8,600,000 that we originally estimated down to about $8 million. So about a 600, almost a $600,000 reduction from what we originally estimated. If you want to look at it even greater terms, I have the FY09 cherry sheet where we started. It was 9.88 million. So we've had cuts of 1.8 million between FY09 and now. So that's fairly considerable. Okay, going to the next page. This is just kind of real brief information on the schools. The first line you have going across there is the, the total stimulus money that has been awarded to the schools, or I guess awarded would be the right word, for FY10. Some of it's earmarked for specific things, like there's, well, $503,000 of it went back to fiscal year 9 to cover 9C cuts in that year. $757,000 of it is for the IDEA, which is Special Education Funds. And for the most part, that's being used to backfill in reductions in circuit breaker. There's a small amount for pre-K allocated to Milton. And then the biggest chunk is that 1.1 million, which is really meant to be, to bring the foundation budget up to full funding. And again, those funds are there for two years and then they go away, so it's basically one-time money. But it kind of gives you an idea of where the, you know, after FY11, and that money goes away, where the state's gonna have to come to just get back up to, you know, funding, you know, to, just to replace this money. And it's, yeah, Mary?
Let me just ask you. So the fiscal 10 state fiscal stabilization funds, that's, that's using federal money to pay what the state, under the present formula, would be paying the town.
Yes, yeah.
So that is not a new payment, but that is what we would be getting under the formula, but it, now it's being paid by...
Well, what it is, what it is, there's a, there's a, an education foundation budget for each community.
Right.
Which is just a theoretical budget for each school district, you know, what it should cost around the school district. Depending upon the, the wealth of the town, the town is expected to fund a certain portion of that, and the state is supposed to fund the remaining portion. Milton's share is about 82%, I believe, town side and the balance from the state. The state has never been able to fund 100% of their share of it. With the stimulus money...